Well, welcome. It's that time of year again. We went through our annual town meeting where we set a budget for the town of Milford that was over a hundred million dollars. Hard to believe that our little town has grown up to that kind of number. But as always, for those of you who don't know, we never know how much money we have left over, and this will be, I think, the thirteenth or fourteenth year in a row that we've actually had a surplus. My hats are off to the town department heads because it's because of their work that at the end of the year, we're going to have three point, well, we'll go through it, but more than three million dollars in surplus this year that we can afford now to do many of the projects that other towns could only dream of. But before we get into the warrant to tell you how we're spending your money, let's start with introductions.
Good evening. My name is Mike Welsh. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen here in Milford.
Chris Moran, chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mike Soros, member of the Finance Committee.
So, we start this year with thirty-six articles. First article, I guess, Michael, why don't you take us through it?
Well, this article is basically allowing the town treasurer to get into negotiations with people that are in the rears with back taxes. As everybody knows, you saw there was a piece of property that we were involved in this year in the community that hadn't had taxes paid on it in almost ten years. So what this does, this article is going to allow the town treasurer to actively work with people, because we're not in the business to take somebody's home, and that's a point that we valuably made at the selectmen's meeting. We don't, we don't want to take you home. We want to work with you, but we want you to work with us as well. And that's what this article does. This article allows the town treasurer to have a stronger and more active role in working with people that are behind on their property taxes to try and work themselves out, and it clearly states it's no more than a three-year deal. Gives you three years to work it out.
And in the past, we've run into people who had little trapezoidal pieces of land that owed taxes, and rather than go spend a fortune foreclosing and going through it, because people don't want to spend legal money either, they've just said, "I'll give you the land. Go away."
Right.
And this gives the treasurer the ability to not have to go spend a lot of legal assets, a lot of money.
Right. Well, I don't know what it is now, but I know for a fact there was a time when there were over a hundred pieces or parcels of land in the community that had not had taxes paid on it because they were in the heirs of, you know? So again, this gives the treasurer the ability to be more active and go after those parcels of land, and if we can't find the heirs, which can be very costly, because you're going to make sure in tax court and title court, you find everybody. But if we do, it gives the town the ability to go, like in my case, I have one on my street, go to one neighbor, the other neighbor, and say, "This is the value of the land."
Do you want to buy it?
Want to split it? If you don't want to split it, then go to the other neighbor. Do you want the whole thing? If not, then it takes the town, it's the town's, and they can auction it off. So it becomes a revenue source for the town.
So, there's a zero-dollar item. Article number two. I mean, back when Paul Revere first started doing our records on stone tablets, it was okay. Why don't we talk about article two?
Well, through the, going by the town hall, if you drive by it, I mean, you can literally hear it busting at the seams, and the predominance of what it is is records. Every office that you go into in town hall, you'll notice in the back of that room and in the closet stacks and stacks of file folders and that kind of stuff. We want to digitize that. We want to create a filing system that we can easily find something. That's the other thing. If you come in and you ask for it, okay, we'll find it for you, but you're going to have to come back, because you're not going to stand here while I look for it, because it could take an hour and a half. So through the digitization of whatever records we can keep and then destroy the paper copies, as well as the creation of a filing system where we can put our hands on any document that you ask for in a very quick timeframe, really will help work in efficiency at town hall, as well as free up a lot of room.
Well, the other thing that worries me is some of those documents are critical documents.
Right.
And to say they're controlled is being liberal, or, you know, very forgiving, because just because they're in somebody's office during the day, people wander in and out of selectmen's office, the other offices. It's not a controlled environment, and I don't really feel comfortable that important records...
Think what's in the tax collector's office.
Exactly.
And God forbid the sprinkler system goes off in the town hall once.
Oh, yes.
I mean, it would be catastrophe.
So sixty grand will get us, we believe, it all done.
Yes.
And then we just have to build it into a normal budget that you say, okay...
Yeah, to be a yearly expense. We're going to digitize 2018's documents, and then file them in the filing system, and then it'll be small expenses.
Isn't it wonderful that you'll have a file hierarchy that you don't have to say, "Okay, who's got the box with the Walsh family records?"
Right. Well, to Chris's point, somebody can come into town hall in a timely manner. You can, you know, look up their records, print what they need. It's just efficient. This day and age, you have to be that efficient.
And stone tablets have gone the way.
Gone.
Now, articles three through seven, they are all commissioned by the town meeting improvement committee.
Study and improvement committee.
Study and improvement committee.
Yeah, so this committee is trying to create essentially a handbook for town meeting members. So they're setting the book of rules, right? So a lot of people think we work under Robert's Rules. We don't. We're going to be choosing this other book, The Town Meeting Time, and we're going to be, the other articles make a few adjustments and additions to those rules, you know, things that we have done customarily in the past, but nowhere is there a document or handbook that says that these are the rules of town meeting.
Even saying we go by town meeting time. When I first came to Milford, there were things that I'd go up to Mike Nofree and say, "Okay, that makes no sense to me. Why?" Because I'm thinking, like everybody else, must be run by Robert's Rules Revised Two. He said, "No, Town Meeting Time." This was a document written specifically to make New England town meetings more efficient.
Right.
Once he explained that to me, I said, "Well, that makes a lot more sense." But, you know, there's a lot of things, like Michael always seconds articles.
Right. And that's something that we've customarily done over the times and has become a Milford town meeting tradition, and therefore we're making it more official by putting it in a document.
And, I mean, things like when you have this page and a half article, and everybody immediately look over to Jerry Moody, and he'd make the motion to waive the reading of the article if it's the same as the, of course.
Yeah.
You know, please, don't make me sit here for, you know, a lifetime. I can read.
I think what's interesting with this too, Al, though, is, as you know, October ninth, we have the, basically, I call it the dry run of the town meeting, but what it is is where, you know, we, basically, everybody comes, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the town meeting members, and the general public can come, and we basically walk through all the articles to try and streamline the actual evening of town meeting. So that if somebody does have a question, let's answer the questions on the ninth, so that the night of the town meeting on the fifteenth, we can move right through articles.
So hopefully this will, I don't know if it's going to change town meeting. It's just going to formalize what we do.
It's going to create a handbook for new town meeting members to explain it better exactly how to do things.
And, you know, for town meeting members, for residents who are paying these bills, a couple of years ago, we made a commitment as a finance committee that we would post all of the articles, all the information we get. So when you want to find out why are we spending forty-three thousand dollars on a pick-me-up truck, or one-point-one million on a ladder truck, I mean, we had hundreds of pages of information, and the town meeting members legitimately said, "Don't give it to me that night. I can't absorb it or understand it." We've made a commitment that a month before the meeting, so this is on the website, and the Finance Committee members also have access to it through the Finance Committee folders, that all the background information that we see as Finance Committee is put up there. It's not meant to sway your vote, but at least any resident who says, "Okay, you're using my money. I have the right to know why."
Right.
There's the background. There's everything we've gone through. At least, we've tried to put everything. So, you know, again, if you're interested, go to the website. If not, call the selectmen's office, (508) 634-2303, and say, "Where is it?" And they'll tell you how to find it, because it's your money. Now, we roll into number eight. The first one that's money, real money, quarter million dollars.
Necessary. You know, one of the things that people that serve on the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and some of the other committees in town know, one of the things that we're dealing with is this cancer issue with, you know, their, in firefighters. They're finding out that a lot of firefighters are unfortunately, you know, getting cancer as a result of their jobs, the hazards they work with. So, you know, something like this is necessary, because, and I understand people say, "Well, you know, policemen and firemen choose their occupations." Well, they do, but it's a very dangerous occupation, and we have a responsibility to make sure as a community that we're backing them with any medical bills or any assistance that they need.
That isn't covered by normal insurance.
Normal insurance. That we, as a community, are there to assist them.
And these are Milford people.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is an article that we've always funded and then replenished, so it's not something that we're saying, "We're going to spend a quarter million dollars this year." I don't know, did we put any money in last year?
No, we haven't for two years.
Okay.
Been two years.
And you make a great point, Al, when you say these are Milford people. If you remember the night that the police chief brought in the six new recruits this year that went on to the police station, all six of them were raised in the town of Milford. One of them, all five of them live here. One of them just, just bought a house in Bellingham, but they all grew up in the community. They live in the community. They understand the community, and that's important.
Well, the other thing is, I mean, we all have a soft spot if you're Milfordian, but even if you're not, these are the guys stepping into the burning building, stepping in front of people that you don't know that could, you know, have less than good intentions with guns.
Yeah.
How can you not want to support them?
I've never forgot this. The, one of the years that I was on the school committee, and John Fernandez was a state rep at the time, spoke at the Woodland School, and he said to the students, "Firemen and policemen are taught to run into danger, and we're taught to run away from danger."
But the only reason we get to run away is because they're running towards it.
That's right. I never forgot that.
We're running towards article number nine, and people are going to ask, "Thirty thousand dollars for a grant writer?"
Absolutely. We're putting a big emphasis on revitalizing our downtown. The selectmen have created a downtown revitalization committee. They've been working for, I'd say, what, eighteen months or so formally, to work on a process in which we revitalize our downtown. We know our downtown needs some work. I don't think there's any question about that, and it's obviously been a common theme in any political debate you've heard for the last five or six years. So now we're putting our money where our mouth is, and we're trying to get some work done on the downtown. One of the things that we'd like to do is get a grant writer, and if anyone knows the history of our grant writers in our town, it's been a very, very successful investment.
Now, we funded Sue Tr- no, Tru- Clark.
Yeah.
I still, I got it. These days, I'll get it right. Sorry, Sue. But we funded her. How did she do?
Yeah, just phenomenal. When you talk about the return on investment for Sue Truad, that's like buying Microsoft in nineteen eighty-one. It's like, it was fantastic.
Yeah, let's see. The Heights got a grant for seven fifty. I mean, you start downtown, got a grant...
We got Main Street. Yeah.
So this investment is for thirty thousand dollars for a grant writer to pursue funds for the downtown revitalization. I can't imagine this person is not going to make their money back and then some, so we thought it would be a good investment to go ahead and do that.
Well, if you think about it, we put thirty grand in, and we got three grants worth millions when you add them all up.
Yeah.
We could fund thirty grand for a long time if we never got even another grant.
Well, I think it's important too, Al, is what this is going to allow the community to do is to have somebody whose sole focus is to write...
Just like Sue was.
Exactly. Instead of, you know, you go into town hall, or, you know, or you get somebody and say, "Oh, you know, I'll help you with that."
Yeah. Hey, Rick, in your downtime, write a grant.
This is somebody's responsibility.
We lived that way for years and never got anything. We put, you know, thirty grand's a lot of money, but we put that into Ms. Sue, and all of a sudden, pop, seven fifty, pop, five fifty. You know, it's like...
Right.
Okay, we roll into article ten.
So this kind of goes along with article nine. This will fund an architect, so all the money or potential monies that we get from a grant writer, we would help the business owners conform to those grants by having, hiring an architect to help them with the designs, so that there's one look and feel for downtown, so that we don't have, you know, mismatched...
Yeah, and fifteen grand seems like a lot of money, but really, for a town's architectural services?
It's a very small amount when you think about it. It's architectural services, so it's, I think it's a good investment.
Okay, Chris. Self-service gas stations, number eleven. Your favorite topic.
Well, it's just, it seems like it's this thing that always keeps coming back every couple of years. There's the big argument of everybody saying, "Well, what about the elderly?" That question has been answered, and it was answered last time, I thought, effectively, and I'm hoping it gets across this town meeting. This doesn't eliminate, there's still the service stations will be required to have the, if you are elderly, disabled, or handicapped...
You push a button.
Absolutely. So if you choose to never pump your own gas again, you do not have to do it in the town of Milford. It will be continued to be offered. But what this does enable is that for the rest of us who don't mind pumping our gas, wouldn't mind saving maybe five, seven cents a gallon, whatever it is, and being able also, to be honest with you, we're so busy here with traffic and everything, sometimes you get to these full-service centers, and you're sitting there for ten, fifteen minutes before the guy comes over to pump your gas. Most of us, to be honest with you, a lot of times, we'll hop out of the car, we'll pump the gas ourselves, but legally, that's not supposed to...
You mean, we're right under the sign that...
This is, do not get, do not touch. So this article right here is hoping to allow self-service gas stations in Milford.
I remember way back when, we had a lot of Milford families, you know, you remember the Murphys?
I was just going to say Murphys mobile.
They had one island, and a lot of people said, "We don't want to offer full service and self-service, because you're going to put them out of business, because they can't put in a second island."
Right.
But last time I looked around Milford, the one-horse pony, you know, one-trick pony, the one island, I don't see any of them anymore. So we're not hurting anybody.
No, and I think an important point that has to come out too is that the, the fire chief, you know, has even said that self-service gas stations by regulation are safer than the old full-sta, because of the fire suppression systems and all the regulations that are put on them, you know, they're, they're actually a safer environment.
And I'll put you on the spot, chairman of selectmen. If I'm handicapped, and I go to one of these self-serve, and I push the button, and they don't come out, what are you going to do about it?
Let me know, and I'll handle it. Absolutely.
And I think that's the key.
And of course, the thing to Chris's point that is, depending on the square footage of the actual building, depends on how many attendants you must have on call. So there's got to be a minimum of two at all times, but if you build a big enough facility, you might have to have three.
But you're going to have two people, and legitimately, Mike, what you're telling me is, if I push the button, because I can't easily get out of my van...
Right.
I'm not going to lower the thing, pull the wheelchair...
No.
And nobody answers. I can call the selectmen's office and say, "Hey, wait a minute. You promised."
Absolutely.
And in my mind, the disabled, the elderly, or whoever's going to use that service, to be honest with you, is going to get their gas faster.
Yes.
Because those guys are now tied up with the other ten cars now.
Right.
So, you know, to be honest with you, they're going to get premium service.
And the FinCom referred that one to sponsor only because we didn't have enough time to really vet it.
Yeah.
Now, when we go to twelve and thirteen zoning articles, again, referred to sponsor.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make one last comment on that self-serve thing. So I know a lot of people are still concerned about people maybe losing their jobs, but it turns out that gas stations and self-serve, they don't make a lot of money off the gasoline sales. They make their money, their profit margin off the...
Off repairs.
No, well, that, or, or the mini store inside. That's where they make their, their big money. And in fact, when you go to places like Cumberland Farms and other big establishments like that, you usually see more staff, because they have the profits to support more people in their stores, because they're not busy in the low-margin gas sales.
Twelve and thirteen rezoning, referred to sponsor by the FinCom.
Mm-hmm. Refer to the planning board.
Refer to the planning board.
On twelve, yep. And then thirteen is being passed over. That was the building kitchen and the board of health.
Oh, okay. Now, we go to fourteen. This was favorable. Collective bargaining agreement for the dispatchers.
Yeah, that was a contract, to be honest with you, that was over two years, I think, in the, in the work. Almost two and a half years. So what happens is, the contract gets settled, the bill is due.
But why didn't you build the forty-five grand right into the original budget?
Well, you can't do that. This is negotiations. If I put in forty-five, the first thing I do when I sit down at the table and say, "We want forty-five extra thousand,"
Right.
The town already said that. So we go through the due diligence of negotiation between our negotiator and the union. Whatever deal they work out with, we now have to backfill, and this is a significant amount of forty-five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we would be really hobbling the negotiators. If I'm going in saying, "Okay, Mike's wife told me he's got forty-five grand to spend."
The number's already in his pocket.
I'm not going to sit there and say, "I'll take thirty-five."
We used to have the same problem. You could, all you gentlemen, as Finance Committee members, can appreciate, we'd be in the school committee negotiating with the teachers for the contract, and you gentlemen, as Finance Committee members, would be sitting back waiting, saying, "Oh, what is the number going to be? What's the number going to be?" You know, waiting for us, and here we are negotiating. Same thing here. Same thing.
Now, we move to article fifteen. Again, favorable vote by the Finance Committee. Funding for clerks' new salaries.
Yeah, so we established a budget, but then at town meeting, we set certain rates, and those rates were based on, or excuse me, those budgets were based on the old rates. So this article basically funds the difference between the old rates that we budgeted in, in, for a town meeting...
In May.
In May, and now the new rate that we voted.
It's a whopping nineteen hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
If that doesn't pass.
Yeah.
Now, article sixteen. Hundred grand for removing trees.
That's a big one.
We did go favorable on that. Does anybody want to talk about hundred grand for removing trees?
Well, I think he did, I think Chuck did a really good job the other night at the FinCom explaining it, and there were a lot of great questions that came out of the FinCom members about it. But there are areas in town where there are some trees that need to definitely come down. They're an endangerment, and yeah, it's a lot of money. A hundred thousand's a lot of money, but I say, imagine if somebody was walking their dog down the street and a limb fell off of a, you know, that's...
But none of them were an imminent emergency.
No, and that did come up that night, that, you know, are any of these...
Because I remember years ago, when you were on the committee, when we got told that there were emergency expenditures needed, because the trees at Memorial were going to fall down and crush children.
Yeah.
So we immediately asked, "Will we close in school?"
Right.
If it's that much of an emergency, I don't want any of our kids, any of our forty-two-hundred kids, going to get crushed by tree. Well, how long's it been? Oh, six months. So is it really, I appreciate that it wasn't the shenanigans of, "It's got to be done immediately."
Right. No, he said that, that night.
Yeah, I mean, he was upfront.
It's cadence.
It sounds like a lot of money, but it's two-hundred-and-thirty trees, and when you do the math out, it's four-hundred-and-thirty dollars per tree, and that covers all the incidentals, like the detailing and all that stuff.
Covers the police, but it also covers the disposal.
Correct.
Right.
You got that, whatever, that mega, super-duper machine that they're going to rent.
Yeah.
It's like, they get two-hundred trees done in days.
Well, if you saw...
Six days.
Six days.
When they did the center of town, they did it on a Saturday morning, and they started, I think it was around five o'clock, but they, the company that we hired, they literally were from one end of Main Street to the other end of Main Street with crews. They weren't just going down Main Street tree by tree. They had multiple crews working on Main Street. They can get costly, you know?
So, we do budget twenty-five thousand a year for normal stuff.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one big hit of saying, "Okay, we had damage from insects. We had weather damage, and let's just do it all at once."
This is a catch-up Israeli investment.
Yeah. Okay. We roll to seventeen. Sewer stabilization account.
Really, there's nothing happening here money-wise. What's happening is that we're taking basically some money from the sewer and moving it from, basically, you would say, like their checking account to their savings account. It will allow a lot, a lot higher return on the money. They don't need the money. It's like when you have some extra money in your checking, you slide it over to your savings, get a little bit better return on it. No spending's being done here, and to be honest with you, it even makes it harder to get the money out after, because you need the two-thirds for the stabilization withdrawal. So we were, we were favorable on this.
Now, article eighteen. All hail Chief Tui, Rev. Two. We had budgeted a six-hundred-thousand-dollar...
Six-fifty.
Six-fifty.
Yeah.
And Chief Tui and the Fire Department said, "We don't need it this year. We can wait a year," before we even asked him.
Yeah.
So Mike had his tip to him. Next year, I mean, we are later on proposing to put some money away, because we know it's coming next year.
Well, I think that's a valid point, you know, Al, that the citizens of the community need to know that not only our Finance Department at town hall, but our Finance Committee, working together, is, is taking that money. We're not, we're not taking that six-fifty and saying, "Okay, well, now let's go spend it on other projects."
Yeah, let's go spend it on gold toilets.
Exactly. We're saying, "No, we're going to take that, again, to the credit of good people. We're taking that six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We're transferring it into a fund so that next year," because we know Rescue One's coming next year. He said, "I can wait a year. We've got that six-fifty. All saved and tucked away."
It also, you know, when you're dealing with people down in Washington, it's use it or lose it. If it's in my budget this year and I don't spend it, not only don't I get it back, but they'll cut my budget next year.
Right.
This is just good faith on the selectmen, the Finance Committee, saying to department heads, "Hey, guys, you're Milford. If you really don't need it this year, put it off, but we're not going to penalize you. It'll be there when you need it."
But it's, it's things like this that make us the envy of so many communities, because we do things like that. We do things like that.
Now, two-hundred thousand dollars for the Utes.
Right. So as you know, we spent millions of dollars renovating that building for the youth center. One of the renovations, including finishing of the upstairs, extra rooms essentially. So part of the issue now is that they're finding is that it gets really hot in those rooms, now that they're finished and they're using those rooms, and so they'd like to get air conditioning in those rooms. It should help with rentals, because a lot of times, these rooms are available for rent, for the general public, and they've had some cancellations because they found out they don't have air conditioning, and it's the middle of summer, and maybe there's some elderly people or people who have, who are sensitive to the heat, and they can't use that room without air conditioning. So this would, the two-hundred thousand dollars, it basically puts in cooling pumps in, in those rooms. There's no duct work, and it's all for air conditioning.
And this is part one. Let's be, again, transparent. Next year, we're putting in dehumidification system to go along with the air conditioning.
That's a much smaller cost, however. That's going to be...
Fifty grand is still money.
Yeah.
But we know it's coming.
Correct.
And the town meeting should know, if you're voting two-hundred or a hundred-and-eighty-eight, whatever it is, understand there's fifty more coming. So this is a complete package. It's going to be a quarter million dollars, but, you know, I don't want anybody, and one of the issues that came up from the FinCom is, "Okay, we spent five million dollars, and you didn't think you needed air conditioning?"
Right.
You know, so again...
Well, Al, to that point, I don't think it was that we didn't think we needed air conditioning. Again, we were working with the Finance Committee, and, and the Finance Committee was great, and they said, "Listen, this is what we can, this is what we can spend." And as you gentlemen know, we ran into a couple of curveballs, and you were right there for us, you know, so that we could finish the project. Now we've come back. Now we've, you know, we're down the road a little bit. We see the usage of the building, which is phenomenal, and now we've come back to, you know, for more financing for the AC.
But I do want to point out, none of the walls will be torn into for this project. That's why I wanted to explain that this is not a duct system. It's a ductless system. So none of the renovations that we spent money on are going to be destroyed because of the system.
And it does provide some supplemental heat. One of the issues we have with our heating system, it's efficient, but it's slow.
Right.
So this will kind of be the kickoff to, if I need to bring the heat up quick, this will help bring it up while the strategic heating system builds up. It's kind of a tactic.
The boiler.
It's kind of like a locomotive. It takes a while to get started. Once it gets going, it's very efficient.
It gives you a goose to get going on heat, and you don't have to bring up the whole boiler all the way. Now, when we go to twenty and twenty-one, we voted as FinCom to refer to the selectmen. These are liquor license requests.
Right. And all these are is allowing the Board of Selectmen the ability to petition Right. And all these are, is allowing the board of selectmen the ability to petition to the state for the one on Central Street is a mall license, and I think Water Street, I'm not sure, is an all alcohol ban.
Yeah.
That's all it is. It just allows the selectmen to petition the state for, you know, more licenses.
But selectmen have to decide if they want to.
If we want, right.
Okay, this is not the FinCom saying you should. All we're saying is, this should not come under our purview.
Right, it's back to us.
Back to the selectmen. You do the due diligence.
Right.
You make up your mind. Twenty-two was another town meeting, Reno review and update, which basically said, hey, when you read district, because we got a census coming up. And if you remember the last time when we shifted all the districts, all of a sudden, all the town meeting members that have been, you know, I've been in my house twenty-eight years, all of a sudden, it's like, what do you mean I'm not precinct eight anymore?
Right.
So if I wanna be a town meeting member in precinct five, I gotta start from scratch?
Well, remember when that happened, the classic example was you had people that lived in the Heights, had to drive down to the senior center.
Yeah.
And you have to.
It was the most embarrassing thing in the world, because Willie brought that up to say, women, there's the Portuguese club.
Right.
I can almost touch it.
Yeah.
And now I gotta drive across town instead of just walking?
Yeah.
So this kinda just makes it so that if you've been a town meeting member, you don't have to go around and get more signatures to say, I wanna stay a town meeting member.
Right.
Okay. Median markers, number twenty-three, FinCom went favorable on twenty thousand dollars for median markers. What's a median marker?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, aren't these the ones that are at Wendy's?
Yes, that's at that intersection, Cedar Street, Dilla, and Fortin Boulevard.
We have a real issue, as you know, we had the drainage issue at Wendy's, which is still, I drove by.
I blew, I blew an engine as I went through there, and all of a sudden, it was deep enough that the water blew my engine in that parking lot.
So I drove by again the other night, which I'm gonna bring up at another meeting. It was flooded again. But anyway, what it does is people are trying to get around that, and they're shooting across traffic, which makes it very, very dangerous. This will be a way to control the traffic.
Yeah, and everybody's come off four ninety-five, and we all, or it seems like the whole town has to go up Dilla Street. There's nothing more nerve-wracking than seeing somebody go zip.
Exactly.
Right in front of you, and you say, well, okay, if I wasn't really paying attention, that could have been less than a pleasant meeting.
Right.
Very serious.
So these are markers to help.
Control traffic and safety.
It'll help prevent those left turns out of that Wendy's Plaza essentially.
Okay, now we roll into Article twenty-four, nine thousand dollars for extension cords. Okay, Town Park, we all, most of us, love seeing Milford at Christmas time. With the menorah, with the manger. It really does celebrate what the town is all about. It's not about the manger. It's not about the menorah. It's about all of Milford, being inclusionary.
Right.
But that means people want lights. And my understanding is, they've been tapping off the traffic lights to try and get enough power?
Well, not only that, when this article started to get talked about, Al, we found out that there's a central sprinkling system at Town Park that hasn't worked in like five or six years.
Oh.
And nobody even knew it. Or somebody knew it, but nobody said anything about it. So this is basically money to go in and just spruce up the park. Get things working the way they're supposed to.
But it's to add, my understanding is, it's to add more power, dedicated power.
Yeah.
It's an electrical upgrade.
It's an electrical upgrade.
It's not, so it's, for me, it was a little confusing, because I thought it was the purchase of holiday lights. What, it's not. It's the installation of electrical upgrades that could supply those holiday lights, or any other power.
Without risking, because Parks Department came and said, guys, if we blow a circuit, the traffic lights around us
Yeah.
are off.
Yeah.
Yep. You could lose the lights at, at Water Street and, and Congress and Main.
This way, you get, you know, new electric circles. You get, you know, new power brought in that is dedicated to the lights in the park. So if you do something silly, you affect the lights in the park.
Well, even if you go, just an example, and it's also to everybody's point, is that it's gonna upgrade the electrical, but it's also gonna put electrical outlets in different areas. So if you go to the Christmas tree lighting, to your point, Al, there's extension cords. There's cords everywhere, and you're like, you know, and you got little kids running around, it's dark, and you're like, someone's gonna get hurt here, trip on one of these cords.
So nine thousand dollars to celebrate Milford.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, we run into number twenty-five, and it's sixty thousand dollars to look at Fino Pool?
Well, Fino Pool is, is gonna be quite the issue in the next coming years. It's basically to the point where something major has to be done down at Fino Pool. When we say major, we're talking millions. We're talking, this could be a five million dollar project, just to revamp the pool. So what we're looking is, is we're looking what actually can be done there, whether it's redoing the pool. We may not even be able to redo the pool with new rules. I mean, it's right next to the Charles River. I mean, to be on the other, excuse me, um, uh, Milford Pond, thank you. That feeds into the Charles River is what I meant to say. And the wall of Butts, any movement of taking that out could cause.
Well, if you take the wall out, the pond is gonna react.
Yes, there's no question. Also, any new building materials and that kinda stuff, could have seepage in there. So what this study is gonna do is really give us what our options are. It may say, hey, you gotta spend, or don't you have to? But your best bet is a five million dollar, exact replica of what you have now.
Pool to survive.
Yep. Also, maybe you do the pool, but maybe you make it smaller and you move it over. Maybe you do a water park. But what this sixty thousand do, will do, is it will give us our alternatives. Because I'll tell ya, I don't spend five million dollars without a plan.
Right.
Right.
And this sixty thousand, yes, it is expensive, but I'm not entering a five million dollar investment without knowing all my options.
So it's not true that you bought your house without a plan?
Yeah.
You spent that five million bucks?
The plan was my wife said, so that was the plan.
To Chris's point, it was the same thing with the youth center. We didn't spend the five point five million.
Idea. Sixty grand's a lot of money.
Yep.
But, women, we're not gonna vote for a year, two, or so. Let's see what that sixty grand comes out and says, here are your options. Now we have time to either accept them, go look for more, but it's not a jump. It's not, you know, a, a reaction. We'll have time to study it.
Right.
Even though sixty grand's a lot of money, it's a lot better than spending three to five million and then saying, oops.
And that's another example of, Al, how well we do things in this community, you know, to, again, to the, to the finance committee's point. This could be five million dollars. You know what? We're gonna, we're gonna invest a little bit of money to get the, the options that we need.
Went favorable.
Yeah.
Now, we also went favorable on twenty-six, which is the mother of all lawnmowers. You know, it's, it's the Boeing of all lawnmowers, a hundred and some inch wide.
Correct.
What is that about?
This is a thirty-four thousand dollar lawn mower. It's a hundred and four inches for the mowing deck. And the mower that we're replacing, I believe, was a fifty or sixty inch deck. So this is almost twice the size. So one of the things the Parks Department is always saying is, you know, we need more people, we need more people, right? Well, this helps make the people we already have more efficient, right? So they're gonna be able to mow the same amount of fields in less time.
But your question came up, when you have this Boeing, how do you get to the little places?
So they also have supplemental equipment for those little places. They already have that. They're not asking for those purchases now. And that's usually what they do. They do the majority of the work with the big giant mower, and then they take out the little mower and do the fine details.
They said, out of their normal budget, they bought one or two of these. I mean, most of us wouldn't consider them little, but they bought the smaller lawnmowers, because the big Boeing can't.
I think, I think what's amazing, Al, only because I witnessed it up at, you know, at Imperial, and the way they, these, these people can operate those machines. The areas they can get into are absolutely amazing, and the way these machines, you know, spin and move is, it's crazy.
Okay, we rolled into something we moved forward. The highway, highway, Parks Department had a pick-me-up truck in the budget for next year, forty-three grand.
Correct.
And they moved it forward to this year. We went favorable. Why?
Won't pass inspection. Truck's dead. Seventeen years old. Let me tell you, we don't, and, well, you're talking, sitting here, sitting next to someone in the car business. You don't keep a truck for seventeen years.
No.
Especially with the wear and tear that we get on these things, and we're loading the back and that kinda stuff. The, the truck is, is, is done its job. It's seventeen years old. First of all, you, you would be like getting rid of the fleet, because it won't pass inspection, isn't roadworthy. The other thing too, is that this truck is also plow-ready. So it adds another arsenal to our fleet of plowing, which will eliminate one outsourced plow.
Scotty at the highway department can put a blade. This is blade-ready, I think was the term.
Yep.
Right.
Uh, you know what this means. I don't, but they said they can put a Scotty blade on it.
It's plow-ready.
Plow-ready.
Yeah. And I think another point that, you know, people don't realize is when you get into like the Parks Department, and even into the highway department, you have multiple people driving these vehicles. It's not like you, you're the only one driving your car.
Yeah, absolutely. Good point.
Okay, we turn around and Scotty has a hundred and ninety thousand dollar truck. Budgeted, part of the replacement. He made a pretty compelling case.
On this space, this is another one where the frame is gone. I mean, he's like.
The frame is rusted out.
I can fix the door on a truck, I can fix the trunk. He goes, I can't fix a frame. I mean, that's like the skeleton of your body. You can't, you can't fix it.
That was an easy one, when, you know, it's been budgeted, he said it was coming, and the frame is gone.
It's a nineteen nineties plow truck, so it's, we've gotten our useful life out of it.
We also went favorable on a sidewalk tractor.
Which is interesting, because in the last couple of weeks with winter approaching, Al, I've had a couple of people reach out to me and say that because of the equipment last year, there were times where Scott couldn't get on the sidewalk to do their plow, you know, one of them being Hayward Street.
Now, what happens if the sidewalks aren't plowed? Why do we care?
Because people are walking in the street, and that's very dangerous.
People, kids.
Kids, yeah.
At the end of the day, yes, I care about people.
Yes.
But people, adults, should have, you know, some sense. If the sidewalks aren't plowed, kids are gonna run in the street.
Correct.
That's why at the school committee level, Lenny Marcone does a great job with it, is anytime there is school during a snowstorm or after a snowstorm, every bus driver is instructed, if there's a child walking on the side of the road.
Stop.
Stop and pick them up. Even if they have to stand in the aisle of your bus, they're safer than walking down some road.
I think that's the key. We joke about why, now, this one is apparently not, the old one was just a blade, kinda throw the snow.
Yeah.
This one has a snow blower and all the.
Yeah, that was the other thing. And so, so he sat there, and the thing just had a basic V on it, so it would drive along. The only problem in that is then you had a snowbank that was nine feet high on the side, because when we got two or three back-to-back storms, and you didn't get time to get back there to clear the snow, because eventually with that, he did come there with the truck, and they blowed all the snow off the thing, but the V just basically just pushed it up and up and up, and you got these enormous snowbanks. So that was another safety hazard, with people walking out into a sidewalk, a proper place across the street.
And you couldn't see them.
You, you can't see them.
Especially kids.
Especially kids.
Who aren't paying attention, who just.
Yeah.
You're making a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn, and all of a sudden, there's this little face coming out from under the mound.
Yeah, they're shorter than the snowbanks.
Okay. My favorite topic of all time.
Oh, my least favorite.
You know, the communist dictator has said, thou shalt fix stormwater at a tune of forty to sixty million dollars.
Right.
I don't think anyone here likes this project. Unfortunately, this is one of those federal mandates from the EPA that we need to come up with a plan. We, we have the Charles River coming through here, and the EPA claims that there's a pollutant, phosphorus, mo- mostly. And we have to come up with a plan to reduce that polluting in the Charles River.
Now, the one thing that came up, I mean, let's face it, our town engineer and our highway commissioner both said, we're gonna spend a million and a half over the next five years. It's like six hundred, four hundred, three hundred, two hundred, two hundred. And then I think, Chris, you brought it up, or somebody else did, to say, women, how do we know that we need to spend this money? Well, the EPA has done a model. Okay, pooey on the model. If you did a model, you would say Milford's broke and should be doing, you know, using profanity, like two and a half override and dead exclusion. So all the models say we should be in trouble. But this is Milford. So one of the questions we asked the engineer to come back with is, okay, what directive? Is it like an EPA eighty-two seventy for groundwater test? Is it a six oh eight for wastewater? What are they measuring? And maybe we wanna spend, you know, and I think the FinCom and the selectmen too, would say, yeah, spend a few hundred bucks and get a baseline.
Right.
Right.
Because this is all about reducing your phosphate input by forty percent. I'm just not real comfortable that I'm gonna trust Washington to tell me, yeah, you, you keep going, keep spending more.
Well, it came up the other night at FinCom, Al. A great, a great question came from one of the finance committee members. What is the level?
Yeah. Well, it's never been directly measured. It's been, like you said, it's been modeled.
Yeah. What is the level? Forty percent from where?
According to their model, we're over the limit that they want us to be. Well, if we do a direct test, we might find that we're a lot closer to where we need to be than we actually are.
And then once we do some of these remediation steps, okay, how are we doing? Do we have to keep spending? Because, I mean, forty to sixty, and they say forty, so you know that's gonna be sixty.
Right.
Yep.
That's a lot of money.
Well, I think too, is, is, we spent how much for the retention basin at the end of Summer Street, and it came up the other night as well. It collects seventeen pounds of phosphorus or something.
Yeah. And then, and then they don't even recommend doing it anymore, because they say they're havens for mosquitoes.
Right.
Which carry diseases. So now they stop retention basins. We just did it eighteen months ago. It's like, all of a sudden, that's not a good idea. Which brings me back to the story, and you've told it six times. I want you to tell it a seventh time, because to me, it fits perfectly.
Yeah.
You're New York's.
Is that, is that in the, in the mid-seventies, when the gas stations were dirty, and all this dirt was dug up out of the ground and hauled up to Midstate.
Hazardous waste.
As hazardous waste to the middle of New York, billions and billions of dollars were spent. And then somebody from the EPA one day said, why don't we just put it on the side of the building, cover it, and then every so often go in with a backhoe and flip it around, because gasoline evaporates. All that money was already spent. My fear, as I expressed the other night, and the finance committee members expressed is, yeah, we're gonna start this project. And then what if five years down the road, somebody changes at the EPA and says, you know what? Milford really doesn't have to do that. You know, now, you know, now we've already spent a sizable amount of money.
So, now, the next one, this one seemed goofy to me. I know we gotta do it, but the dam at Milford Pond.
Who's the keeper?
Yes. I mean, I understand that is the regulatory mechanism we have to regulate the height of Milford Pond.
Right.
And if there's an emergency, we have to have the ability to go lower Milford Pond. And then the question came up, well, does it work? And Scotty said, no. So we gotta spend the fifty grand to fix it. But then the question came up is, who flips the switch? You know, it's like having our nuclear arsenal, and somebody's saying, who carries the football? Somebody does, I think.
Right.
You know, so.
That was a great question that came back.
No, it definitely was. It was really funny.
Know who does it. So say it's Chief Tui, Rev. Two. Okay, then I wanna know, what criteria
Correct.
do you use? And who do you check with?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, once we give him the authority.
Right.
I'd like to know that the selectmen, not FinCom, obviously, but selectmen said, you do it when you hit this. Not, I haven't a bad, not that Chief Tui would ever do it, but somebody could go and just say, oh, time to lower the pond. Why? I don't know. It's felt like a good thing.
Wouldn't wanna be living in the plains at the time.
So we got fifty grand to fix it, with a commitment from the engineer that he's gonna go find out who uses it, and then we can ask him, when do you use it?
Yeah.
That was, it was so funny that, not that anyone to watch a finance committee meeting, you're crazy if you do. But the fifty thousand, we talked about for, I don't know, five minutes. We talked about who pushes the button for ten minutes. It was like, became like, that was the predominance of the conversation.
Gatekeeper.
You ought to have a way in case of an emergency
Yeah.
Yeah.
to take care of that area of town. Okay, it works. Mike, do you push the button?
Well, when the question got answered, I was in the back of the room looking forward, and you saw everybody in the room going. Who is it?
Yeah, nobody wanted that responsibility, right? Because, well, that's a huge responsibility and risk.
Oh, sure.
You're the person that has to make that call.
But somebody has to be in charge.
It's like a movie, though, and you could be, and there's like fifteen people in the room, and they're all like, you know, looking at each other.
Somebody push the button.
You do it.
I'm not pushing the button. Give it to Mikey, he'll push the button. Okay, library steps came up, kind of a surprise.
Yeah, so the library steps, they're made out of concrete. They were built in nineteen eighty-six, so they're thirty-two years old. And they're showing their age. So they did show us some pictures where they've tried to patch things, but, you know, if, if you have ever tried to patch concrete, you know the patch doesn't last as long as, you know, it did when it was originally put in. So they would like to replace those concrete steps. They actually were saying that we could go replace them with concrete again. But one of the options we're looking at is granite steps. They're gonna, you know, granite lasts nearly forever. And so I think there was consensus on the FinCom that we would much rather go that route.
Go a little bit more and do it.
Do it quality, you know, and.
This is Milford granite.
Yeah, exactly.
This is Milford, which has our granite in monuments in Washington.
Right.
And we're gonna do cement.
Right. And you have, you know, Stacy Middle School right across, which is all granite. So it would, it would tie in well with the look of the school, and it would look really nice. And it would be something like a lifetime commitment.
And you get Memorial Hall in front of it, another building we renovated.
I think the only gruffles you heard was where. I think the only gruffles you heard was, wait a minute, if these steps were going bad, you know, and the department heads raised the issue. It's legit to go to the Capitol Subcommittee and say, look, one of these days, in the next two or three years, four years, it's gonna happen. And that way, it's not a surprise coming at us, you know, a week before town meeting.
Well, I think what's important, Al, this is a, this is a great example of, of, of the FinCon being so proactive and yourself, you know, running the, the Capitol Plan. And I, I see it every year, from when I was in the school committee, now from the Board of Selectmen, you send out an email, here I am, send it, send in your wish list, you know, everybody's gonna get on the plan. And, and sometimes you, you, you end up down the plan a little bit, but when you watch the whole, and I spoke about this the other night with somebody, but when you watch the whole plan work out with the finance committee, it works.
Yeah.
And, and sometimes we do have an emergency and someone has to, someone has to bump ahead. But for the most part, get on the list, wait your turn.
Do an eighty-five percent efficiency in planning, I don't know.
Just our big thing is, I don't wanna be hearing about something for the first time by reading the warrant.
Right.
That, that's what we don't, say it to me even six months ago, as long as I've heard it before. The first time I'm reading it is on the warrant, I have a problem with it.
Yeah.
With the exception of emergencies.
Article thirty-three, really not a money article.
No.
But it is a money article, it's peg access monies to the school.
Right. No-brainer.
I mean, every resident of Milford that has cable, a lot of them don't understand, this studio, by the way, thank you for paying for it.
Yeah, exactly.
I was just gonna say.
If you look at your bill, depending on whether you have Verizon or Comcast, it'll at least say cost of franchise or franchise fee. It's like a couple bucks a month that you chip in so that we have three hundred odd thousand dollars every year to run the studio at the high school and to run this studio for the town.
Right.
Now, this gives the high school the ability to take the money from the fees we collect.
Right.
And use it. Now, town meeting committee supplies five thousand dollars. Reno needs pencils.
So this is essentially, it, it's not a recurring budget item, but a one-time deposit, at least one time for now. Authorization to deposit money into account, basically so they can, you know, if they need to send out a mailer, like a report, just like the finance committee sends out a report, that they could spend money on things like postage, paper.
Why don't you put it in a regular budget?
We don't know what they need. I, I think that was the, the argument there was, if you give them a regular budget, we, we don't have a baseline, they're, they're a brand-new committee.
And they may not need it, that five grand may last them two or three years.
Yeah.
So the last thing I'd wanna do is put five grand in a budget and have the temptation to spend it.
Yeah.
I mean, luckily, most of the Milford department heads don't act that way, but, you know, why put that stake out there, you know?
Well, I think the next two articles, and we'll get to them, that's, that's a great example of how efficient the department heads are in this community. You know, and how well-run our finance committee is. These next two articles say it all.
Last two articles, number one, well, take them out of order. Thirty-six, before we do thirty-five, thirty-six is putting a million and a half dollars to the tax rate, why?
We believe in the finance committee and the selectmen do and very others, department heads, that we shouldn't be spending your money if we don't need to. We should provide the services that are required by us to the residents of Milford, but we don't need to spend frivolously, we don't need to buy things just for the sake of buying things. And if I, as a taxpayer, I like it, I want my change. I paid my taxes, there's money left over.
Money?
Exactly, it's, it's their money. Obviously, we know too with, with the elderly and, and that kinda stuff, this is, you know, paying a tax bill is an expensive bill.
Heard the bogus argument, Al, it's only eighty dollars for years.
Yeah.
Cause, they used to really fry me when I heard that, cause it kept saying, you know, I'm glad for some people eighty bucks, I hope, nobody in Milford would worry about eighty, except it means they're all doing well. But there's too many people, the people who built this town, eighty bucks when they're living on twelve hundred a month, can make the difference of them buying their meds or eating.
I was gonna say, when they're choosing medicine over food, you know, it can make a difference.
The last one, thirty-five, transfer to the stabilization accounts.
Can, can we go back to thirty-six or whatever? Because to me, I mean, this is, I mean, we have a little bit of time, we'll talk about, to me, this is the highlight of everything. And I just wanna say the number on TV, cause we didn't say it. We will be three point seven million dollars under the levy, after this one point five million dollars. And what that is to our, to people at home, that's three point seven million dollars we could be taking from the residents of Milford that weren't, that were legally able to, that we are not. We're letting them keep three point seven million dollars of money. That's phenomenal. That's just an amazing, amazing number.
One point five million back.
Yeah, to get it to three point seven, yeah. It's, it's, to me, it's mind-blowing. See, and a lot of people don't notice it because we've been doing it consistently year after year. But the year we don't do that, you're gonna notice.
But you know, again, it's, when you look at Prop two and a half, I heard two different versions of two and a half. One was that that's the minimum we can take every year.
Yeah.
And I always went, okay, the technical term is pooey. To me, that's the maximum.
Right.
That you should, should take if needed. But Chris, what you said is profound. If, we didn't need another million and a half. So put it back where it belongs, in the taxpayers' pockets. Now, there's a school coming. In eight years, we're gonna renovate the high school, ten years somewhere, but it's coming.
Renovate, build, whatever.
So we took some of the other bits of money of the three point seven and we put it into stabilization. One of the big hits is six hundred and fifty thousand for next year's truck. Cause if we didn't put that away, next year, we'd either have to increase the one point five million in capital or not do capital.
Right, but to you, to your point, Al, about the high school, and, and I would almost say, back up and look at the Woodland School. We built a sixty million dollar elementary school with the help of the state, but our end of the deal, and as you heard, not last finance committee meeting, no, it was the last one with Zach, we're in such great shape with our end of the finances for the Woodland School because of what the finance committee in the, in the, you know, Board of Selectmen do every year is, we, just like your home, you're, you're, you're saving money, you know, you're, you're gonna put a little, maybe you're gonna redo your front lawn, but you're gonna take this other five thousand and you're gonna put it over here for a rainy day. And that's what we do in this town, and at the end of the day, that's why we're so successful.
Think about it, we put the six hundred away, we earmarked the last two hundred so that the day we need another turf field, we have one point two million that we don't have to go ask tax money for.
Right, and to Chris's point, we don't, we don't hold it all, we say, well, wait a minute, that's a lot of money, let's give a million and a half back on tax, tax relief, we're gonna keep this.
It wasn't ours to begin with.
Right.
It makes it cheaper to borrow money because we have so much in savings that we're less risk to banks and we can get favorable rates for when a school comes.
Cherry on the sundae.
Yeah. Right.
But the dessert, the main dessert is what Chris said, we didn't need to, if we needed it, we'd all rally behind it, you know?
Yeah.
Roof blew off and it was, cost us one to six million we have tucked away for emergency insurance. If we need it, we do it. But if you don't need it.
Right.
Then we remember the people who built this town. And even the people who don't need the money, it's still their money.
Their money.
Absolutely.
So as always, thank you, thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Um, town meeting's coming, tune in. Get to know, I mean, a hundred million dollars just baffles me, our little town spending that kinda money. But when you look around, my metric that I would use when people complain, are we paying too much tax in Milford? Of course we are.